For the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please. May we bow in an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we say thank you for the night of rest. Thank you for this opportunity that we can serve the citizens of Washington County. Lord, we ask for your guidance, direction, and patience with us and allow us to make good, sound, wise business decisions as we move forward. May we always think of the best of our citizens and those in our community. Lead, guide, and direct us. I pray in thy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call our June 13th Washington County Commissioners Meeting to Order. And with that, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from, I guess, May 23rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Next item is Commissioners' Reports and Comments. And Kiefer, you want to go first this morning?
Sure, I'll be brief. Just welcome everyone who's in attendance. Couple citizens we have, good to see you. I know you both. Anyone who may be listening on television or YouTube, thanks for joining in. I hope you learned something today, and I have nothing else to add.
Good, thank you.
Morning. I also welcome the few of us that are out there. We got Washington County Public Schools, Paulie, Randall Leatherman, and staff. Thank you. I called your names out, who cares, right? They're gonna see you, especially you, Randy, because the camera's right on you. So, I was able to attend Ritchie History Museum Grand Opening Friday. I tell you, I mean, it'd be worth your stop up there to see the museum. And, you know, a big thank you to Land and Grove, who pioneered that with John Crumpovich, the owner. Mission BBQ supplied free food for, which was very kind of them. And Mrs. Hogan was there because, you know, the Korean vets were there, and Ron Twenty, who led the charge on that. So, that was, it's just such a nice, tranquil place up there. I just rode around, actually, a little bit and just looked around. It was pretty nice. Was also able to attend the Public Safety Awards at Fair Play. A thank you to the Fair Play Fire Department. Lot of awards, a lot of, lot of our local, they're all our local state police, city Hagerstown, Washington County deputies, they all got some awards for some valor and just doing what they do. I appreciate everything they do do. And then a new business in Williamsport, Sprouts Plants and Things, I think. Yeah, Sprouts Plants and Things. It's on Conica Jig Street, I think number five, actually, five Conica Jig Street. If you like plants and anything to do with gardening, it's a pretty big operation, so you might want to stop there. I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey? Thank you, President Bar. I was at my son's last Rookie League baseball game last night. He's six years old, playing in Rookie League in little sluggers in Smithburg, and it was the playoff game, and they dropped one pretty badly. But it makes me think about all the sports events that have been wrapping up and all the activity that is, is going on in sports, girls softball, boys baseball, lacrosse, all those types of things. And they all are sustained by volunteers, people raising money, working in food stands, volunteering to coordinate the schedules for the games and all of that. So, for all of those teams, all those parents and contributors out there, a big thank you because you're a big part of our community, and your work does not go unnoticed, and it is work. It's joyful work, but it's work. So, thank you. I want to reiterate the thanks to our public safety personnel, as Randy mentioned, the award ceremony, and there were some very moving stories, particularly the one in the response to the Smithburg shooting last year. Fort Ritchie Museum, just one quick comment about that. It was good to see so much about the Korean War there, and a big impact on Fort Ritchie. And my wife's grandfather, he fought in the war. His brother was killed, standing nearly next to him, one month into the war, and died on July 25th. He was on a boat leaving Tokyo, the end of June, when the war started, and the boat was turned around. He was coming home to be discharged from his service, and he was discharged in Pusan, given an M-14 rifle and 10 rounds of ammunition. In one month, he was killed, and only four members of that company that went into combat in early July survived into September. It was not a good time. The US military was not prepared for that war, but it was very moving for me to see that. And thanks to Fort Ritchie and everyone that put that work into there. A quick comment about the school board vote on their budget. There was a, we did not vote for their full request of $7 million, and it just so happens that they cut $6.3 million from schoolteacher salaries, and it makes it look like it was the county commissioner's fault, but it really wasn't. We don't control that. I would note that the school board had a tough decision, and they did bring some balance. Schoolteachers were not without an increase in their pay. They all got a step increase. I've talked to Dr. Savine and others about their budget, and, you know, they chose to, you know, bring on new positions to augment and support the teachers and staffs throughout the school system, and behavioral specialists, and communications experts, and things like that. I think it was well over 100 new positions, and so, you know, there were choices made there. This is not just a county commissioner's decision as to how those monies are appropriated. We give them the lump sum, so. And it's a hard job for them, but, you know, I just want to make that clear. The last thing I want to talk about very briefly is, you know, we have 12 federal holidays, and the one that is, they're all celebrated. We just had Memorial Day and lots of volunteers across the community working, and that's a big thing in our community, volunteerism and support for our national holidays. Probably the biggest one that the county is going to be playing at HCC this year. We voted last week to give them about $30,000, and that's going to be about one-fourth or one-fifth of the monies for that event, because they raise nearly $100,000 themselves. Through volunteerism, and they meet all of the criteria that we have here in the county. We have seven clear-cut items for providing money to groups that are doing events. You know, is it broadly supported? Is it transparent? Do they raise money themselves? There's, there are seven criteria there. I have additional criteria that I discussed early on in January, where there has to be transparency about where the money is and who it's paid to. It's just one example. We have never given more than $5,000 to any group for any national event sponsorship, and that has only occurred twice, and that's to the Sharpsburg Parade. There are plans for a big event on Labor Day and another one on Veterans Day. That's going to cost some volunteers and organizations upwards of $50,000 minimally to pull off. They don't come and ask us for money. They rely on volunteerism and individual contributions. Next week, we have Juneteenth. Monday's a holiday. And, you know, they are being provided some money from the county, I believe, and appropriately so. But we don't have a, a standing policy here, and I worry that if we give money to one group, we're going to get asked for money from other groups, and then other groups. So, we're going to have to take a look at, at that aspect. And monies that we give to these groups should not be used to pay salaries, should not be used to pay family members, should not be used to pay for anything but maybe tangible things, like supporting, getting the trash hauled, rental-supported toilets, et cetera. So, I just had a comment about that, just in case there are any questions, and, you know, we have work to do, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey, Vice President Klein?
Yeah, thank you, President Bar. Having on your team back to sports and stuff, I stopped up Kemp's Mill, ran into your wife. You had a granddaughter playing on a team, and there must have been 300-plus cars in the parking lot, and from the volunteers to the coaches, to the parents supporting the kids, it was good to see that activity up there. Also, on Sunday, attended the Boonsboro American Legion flag retirement ceremony. It was well-attended, and it was a ceremony treating the retirement of all flags with respect. I also was up at the opening day of the Ritchie Boys Museum. They do have a Facebook page and website, so if you want to get a little bit of information on their hours of operation, I would strongly urge you to go up there and take your time and walk through that museum. The history of the Ritchie Boys, many of the Jewish Germans escaping Germany before World War II, went up there and trained, went back and fought for the United States, and along with our Korean War veterans honoring them. So, it's a very nice facility. I, too, attended the Public Safety Awards. I want to thank all those people who were recognized and honored, but every day, there's a miracle in Washington County with one of our first responders, no matter what. So, it's good that we recognize the service of some, and at the same time, now, we recognize and thank those who serve every day. And I also attended the opening of Sprouts in Williamsport. Williamsport's got a rejuvenation going in their downtown. It was one of the many new businesses about to open, and like Commissioner Wagner said, if you're into plants and things, that's the place to go. And thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. President, I just had one additional comment I forgot to mention. I met with the History Advisory Committee, and one of the key issues they discussed was the Black Cemetery at halfway, and, you know, they're going to be coming forward in the near future to make some recommendations for county support for preserving that cemetery.
It's right there off of Virginia Avenue at Lincoln.
Somewhere. I got the exact address here, but I'll give that to you later.
Okay, very good. Yes, and I also would like to say how heartwarming the Public Safety Awards Ceremony was last week, and, and as been previously, previously mentioned here this morning, our hats off to first responders, particularly some of them that, well, put their life in imminent danger with their rescues and heroic activities for others in this community. So, very nice ceremony. I thank, thanks to everyone that helped put that together, and a special thank you to the Fair Play Fire Department for hosting that awards breakfast, if you will. Last week is no different than most weeks, very busy in our community. Interesting Friday night, I attended the 47th or 48th Annual Clear Spring Alumni Banquet. There's approximately 400, 425 Clear Spring alumni residents, and some from out of town, attended that event. Very nice event, a lot of, lot of fellowship, a lot of catching up on old times, and if you, if you thought Clear Spring looked like a deserted town on Friday night, they were all at the fire hall, enjoying a nice evening, so. And then on Saturday night, the 50th Anniversary Class Reunion of Clear Spring High School. I did attend that. My wife was a graduate in 1973, and had a very nice evening with the 50th Class Reunion. Sunday afternoon, former mayor, Varner Pat Paddock of Hagerstown. I don't have in front of me the years that he served as mayor of Hagerstown, but they had a memorial service for him at the lobby of the Maryland Theater. It was family and friends, and Pat had a lot of history. He, he was actually raised in North Dakota, and a long story how he got to Hagerstown, but he eventually became mayor, and I think served two terms, I believe. I'm not sure. I may stand to be corrected on that, but Pat was very engaged in our community. His whole family has been, owns property, and has been engaged for many years in, in the Hagerstown area, and we'd just like to say thank you to the family and pay respects to Varner Pat Paddock, former, former mayor of Hagerstown. Sunday afternoon, I was invited to participate in a very special service at Congregation Benay Abraham, the Jewish synagogue over on Baltimore Street. It was the 130th anniversary of the congregation there on Baltimore Street, and also the 75th anniversary of the State of Israel. Tom Reifert from State of Maryland gave a very detailed and lengthy presentation to the group on Thomas Kennedy, the life and history of Thomas Kennedy, and his, his time in the legislature, and, and to his initiatives for the Jewish faith and, and Jewish participants in the House of Representatives and the Senate of the State of Maryland back in the 1800s. So, it was a very nice ceremony, and we appreciate Tom Reifert's efforts and all his research and the comments, and the park across the street to preserve the history of Thomas Kennedy, and there's some other initiatives coming forward. But for the history of the church, the congregation there on Baltimore Street, they're having a bimonthly services up through November on Sunday afternoons, so. Couple other things. Looking ahead for upcoming events, we've got quite a few here listed. Don't forget tonight is 6:00 PM, our joint meeting with the town of Boonsboro. Tomorrow morning, Jonathan Horowitz, our own employee of the county, is the guest speaker at Applause Caterers, Chamber of Commerce Monthly Breakfast Meeting, talking about the economic development initiatives in the county. Eagle Scout Ceremony for Cade Melton on June 14th, 6:30 PM. The June Bash, Chamber of Commerce Monthly Event is June 15th at 5:00 PM. Grand Opening of the Greenhouse Cafe and Harshman Development at Fort Ritchie, that's on the 20th. Project Home Care Provider Appreciation Event, June 21st at St. James Brother and Church Pavilion. The Joint Chamber Mixer with Frederick County is June 21st at Maryland National Golf Course. Mayor's Miss USA and Miss Teen USA Luncheon is June 23rd, and not the least of which is the 10th Anniversary Celebration with our sister city, Hagerstown, Indiana, is June 24th at 5:30 PM, Bulls and Bears. And just a reminder that there is no Commissioner meeting next week, the fact of a holiday week with Juneteenth, so. I think that's about it. Any other comments, Commissioners?
No.
Hearing none, then we'll move right into staff comments. And first up is Dawn.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here on behalf of the Washington County Commission for Women requesting a motion to accept the recommendation to appoint Skylah Heiss to serve a three-year term from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2026. This is not a paid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
And Commissioners, I am here on behalf of the Historic District Commission requesting
a motion to accept the recommendation to reappoint Gregory Smith to serve a second three, three-year term from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. This is not a paid commission.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion, second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Thank you.
And again, I'm here on behalf of the Historic District Commission requesting a motion to accept the recommendation to reappoint Michael Lushball to serve a second three-year term from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. This is not a paid commission.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
And again, I'm here on behalf of the Historic District Commission requesting a motion to accept the recommendation to appoint Justin Bedard to serve an unfulfilled term through July 30th of 2024. This is not a paid commission.
Motion to approve. I second.
Okay, motion, second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Next up is Nicole Phillips.
Kendall Desa, the Deputy County Attorney and Rem Human Resources Director.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign.
And one other item, with the appointment of Michelle Gordon to acting county administrator on June 6th, 2023, I'm requesting a vote of approval to appoint Kelsey Mace as interim chief financial officer.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign.
And one other item, with the appointment of Michelle Gordon to acting county administrator on June 6th, 2023, I'm requesting a vote of approval to appoint Kelsey Mace as interim chief financial officer.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Kendall.
Is Nicole coming? Do you know?
I don't know. I just sent Michelle a message.
Who we wait, no. Nicole Phillips. We had an item. It's on my list. Anything current?
Nothing.
Okay.
I do have some things.
Yes, I can say, Michelle.
I also attended the grand opening of the Ritchie History Museum in Fort Ritchie on Friday. On Monday, I did meet with Greater Hagerstown Committee to discuss transportation issues, and I provided the commission with an update. Over the next few weeks, I will be meeting individually with department heads, local leaders, elected officials and town officials to become acquainted with them and to get up to speed on any pending issues. Legalization of cannabis does not limit or prohibit existing employer drug-free workplace policies, including the use of or testing for the presence of cannabis. I've reached out to other counties in Maryland, and so far, none have made any revisions to their policies as a result of legalization of cannabis. So, I'll work with HR to send out a policy refresher to employees and remind them of the current county policy regarding that. I'm also happy to place this on the agenda if you would like to discuss it any further. Lastly, I do have a letter of support for Maryland Rural Development Corporation. They're requesting a letter of support for their continued funding of the Circuit Rider Town Manager Program. This program provides administrative and management support to small rural incorporated towns. No funding is requested of the county, just a letter of support to ensure that this program continues in the state. This organization currently works with Boonesboro, Smithsburg, and Williamsport to help with grant writing and management for programs such as the Main Street Operating Grant, facade improvement grants, strategic demolition grants, and they help them identify new grant opportunities needed for capital improvement and infrastructure projects.
You look for concurrence on that.
That's a concurrence, a consensus.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm okay, wasn't it?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle's end.
That's everything.
Okay, thank you. Nicole?
So, Nicole Phillips. Excuse me, out of breath, I'll write it down here. Great Manager for Office of Great Management. I am here for a motion to appoint Jean Carol Keys to fill a partial term vacancy as a community representative to the local management board through June 30th, 2023, and thereafter serve a first three-year term from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026.
What's the name of the person again?
Jean Carol Keys.
Okay.
She is a paraprofessional for Bester Elementary School.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry again, I apologize.
Okay, okay. Any other staff comments this morning? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens' participation. Any citizens here this morning that would like to come forward? Hearing none, then we'll move right along to budget adjustments to the Washington County Board of Education General Fund Budget. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, commissioners. Ms. Gordon. Jeff Brew, Chief Operating Officer, Washington County Public Schools.
Good morning. David Brandenburg, Executive Director of Washington County Finance, Washington County Public Schools.
So, the matter before you this morning is budget adjustments to the fiscal year 2023 budget for the Board of Education. As I share with you every time we come, the Annotated Code of Maryland does require the Board of Education to reforecast revenues and expenses periodically. Any of those items that cross major categories do need concurrence from, and approval from the Board of County Commissioners. This item has been represented to both the Board of Education's Finance Committee, which approved, as was the Board of Education's at the full business meeting last Tuesday. And with that, Mr. Brandenburg and I are here and happy to answer any questions you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any?
I just have one question if I could ask. Redeploy to maintenance due to nature of work. Could you just describe what type of maintenance are you referring to?
Yeah, so we have, that $1.2 million was in our capital outlay category, which is meant more for larger renovations or new structures. We had none in FY '23 that we're working on, so that money is actually moving over into maintenance of plant to do more building renovation, electrical upgrades, flooring, things of that nature on the maintenance side, since we didn't have more new construction in this year's capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, one question here. You may or may not have the answer right now, but how much do you have in construction or capital reserves or set aside that's not part of the operating budget?
There's currently approximately 11, I don't have that number.
11.3.
11.3 million in the unrestricted fund balance. The Board of Education doesn't carry a capital reserve fund.
Okay, do you have a cap, no capital accounts or anything?
No capital reserve, no.
So, you total, other than the operational funds, you have a total of $11 million set aside for some future use?
Correct.
Thank you.
You got a second? Okay, we have a motion is second. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item is a public hearing. I do have a public hearing opening statement to read. Okay, we want to move forward to the next item?
What is it? It's T-Mobile antenna lease, right?
Yes, correct.
We have people here we need, who do we need here? Mark Bradshaw, I don't see him.
Yeah, we have four minutes. Yeah, we'll just take a four-minute recess then.
Do you want to get Marky's out in the lobby?
Can. Let's go ahead and do that.
He heard, he heard, he heard.
Okay, next.
For listening.
Next item then is amendment to T-Mobile antenna lease. Good morning, Mark.
How are you today?
Good.
I come here today to request approval of the First Amendment to mowing space lease. T-Mobile has an existing lease agreement with the county to lease space on the, lease space for an antenna on the Sharpsburg water storage tank. The existing lease agreement defines the number and size of the antennas that can be placed on the water tank. T-Mobile has requested permission to install a temporary microwave dish on the tank while they extend fiber optics to the site. The lease is vague as to whether this is permissible. In order to provide clarity and resolve the vagueness, the county attorney's office drafted a proposed amendment allowing for the temporary dish installation. Once the fiber optics is installed, the microwave dish will be removed and the amendment will be terminated.
So, basically, the lease is vague. They want to put a temporary dish on top to help their progress. And does Sharpsburg have anything to do with this at all?
No.
Okay.
Mark, I know we're looking at ways to source groundwater in Sharpsburg to either supplement or replace the surface water we draw in from the Potomac. Does this inhibit that in any way, since we're adding additional equipment to the water tower?
No, it's actually a source of revenue. Currently, they are paying over $3,000 per month rent through the county that goes toward our water fund. So, no, it does not impede anything to do.
With that project, okay.
Two weeks from now, I'll be bringing the MOU in for the well between the town and the county. We now have that completed, so I'll be presenting that to you in two weeks.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I see the concurrence here as Assistant County Attorney. And your concurrence?
Yeah, Zach prepared the lease and worked with the T-Mobile.
And you concur with what you're?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Thank you. 9:35. Let's go back to the minutes.
9:34. Talk long.
Minute and a half recess. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and read the introduction. By the time I do that, then I think it'll be officially 9:35. Next item, agenda is a public hearing concerning the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, Maryland Segment National Register nomination. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners may then discuss the issue and take any action that they deem appropriate, including adoption or rejection of the proposal, or they may take the issue under advisement and deliberate at a later date. At this time, I'd like to ask, is Megan Jenkins here to come forward and present the agenda item? And Jill Baker, good morning, ladies.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning.
Megan Jenkins, GIS Coordinator, Washington County Department of Planning and Zoning. Before you today is the application for the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, Maryland segment, for its National Register nomination. As a certified local government, Washington County plays an important part in the process of nominating properties to the National Register through a working relationship with Maryland Historical Trust and the National Park Service. Under this program, both the local Historic Preservation Commission, which would be our Historic District Commission, and the jurisdiction's chief elected official are asked to provide recommendations concerning the eligibility for the National Register listing. That documentation is then submitted to the Maryland Historical Trust on the form that was provided in your agenda packet. The nomination packet was received from MHT on May 1st of this year for the Appalachian National Scenic Trail, Maryland segment, that involves both public and private landowners along the eastern border of the county for approximately 41 miles of trail length, from Sandy Hook to the Pennsylvania border near Penmar. The majority of the approximately 270 tax parcels, 4,200 acres, that are involved are on state and federal property. The private owners, which were identified by the consultant, were notified via individual letter. There were less than 10 of those. Additional letters were also sent to private property owners, approximately 24, that are directly adjacent to that boundary. Again, the majority is within federal or state lands. The nomination includes 24 structures, of which the AT treadway itself is included, 20 side trails, three bridges, 25 sites, that includes nine overnight use areas and 16 viewpoints. The boundary where it passes through public lands extends to 500 feet on either side of the treadway center line for a maximum of 1,000 feet. It narrows where the property line of public lands is less than 500 feet from the treadway. And when the trail goes through privately owned lands or is co-located on public right-of-way, the trail narrows to four feet, or the boundary narrows to four feet, so two feet on either side of the center line of the trail. The four-foot boundary also applies to portions of the side trails that extend beyond the 1,000 foot or 500 feet on either side of the main trail. So, this nomination is being considered under Criterion A. Criterion A concerns a property that's associated with one or more events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of U.S. history. The segment is being nominated under Criterion A for its association with national recreation and conservation efforts, as well as Maryland state social history for its association with the formation and activities of the various hiking clubs which maintain the trail. The detailed description of the segment provides documentation on the 49 resources associated, again, one being the treadway. The segment also has documentation for Consideration G for its exceptional importance to the U.S. as a recreational resource of enduring national significance. Criterion, or Consideration G is for properties that are less than 50 years old. This is going to hopefully be an addition to National Register listings here in the county. We have 107 listings currently. Some of those are districts such as Williamsport, which have multiple properties or other individual properties. The Historic District Commission's recommendation was included in your packet. They recommended approval. And with that, I don't have any other questions to prepare.
Any thoughts of down, negative to this?
No, so the National Register is providing, the nomination was done on behalf of the federal government, who obviously owns quite a portion of it. The main reason for a listing on the National Register would be so that if there were any permits or monies that were federally involved or state involved, that this property would be considered, the entire length of it would be considered in the process, so that we make sure there's no effects on it. As far as private property owners, there are no effects for the private property owners unless they were to apply for state funds, in which case they would have to talk to the Maryland Historical Trust. But the private property owner properties are strictly the treadway, that four-foot length through their property, or four-foot width through their property.
John, don't we have to get, it doesn't look like there probably is, but public and then the commissioners ask questions, or how's that, what's the?
I'm sorry, I probably.
Is that the way it works? I forget.
Yeah, I probably jumped ahead.
Yeah.
But I wanted to.
You'll need to invite any member of the public who's testified on court.
Okay, let me do that then. We will now open the hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to testify from the first row, please come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you would like us to know. Second row, third row, anyone? Okay, then, I'm sorry, Randy, back to the commissioners.
No, I just, I know Jeff would jump on me here in a minute if I started asking questions.
Had it written down?
Yeah, he was ready to jump on me. Only question I have, and I think he just answered it, was, my only concern was the 10 or 12 or property owners. Have you got any opposition at all from any of them, any letters from any of them, or?
So, from the letters we sent out, so 34 total, I did have two people reach out to me directly. The main question that they had was whether there was any financial incentive. They had no objections. The one gentleman was adjacent to the AT and just had some great stories about how he enjoys having the trail next to his property.
So, everybody got communicated to, and?
Yes, we actually mailed more than what was required, just to make sure that we got any additional comments that were?
That was my only concern. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just have a question, and it's probably less pertinent to this particular issue, but it's about process or your procedures for communicating to the I understand you had a limited number of potential people that could be impacted, but you know, there was no consideration given to any advertising of this, or was there? Did we do it on Facebook and Instagram and target it or not? And I'm a strong advocate for, especially the comprehensive plan coming out, that we do paid advertising to get the widest dissemination for every event. And so, are we or are we not going to do paid advertising? And that question is really for Jill.
We haven't discussed that with the Public Relations Office yet. We're working through those public hearing processes. We're still working on getting the plan out, but yeah, we are taking that into consideration, absolutely.
Probably the consensus is to do paid advertising, correct?
I think so. I think, you know, we want, we discussed earlier making sure we had the widest dissemination of information. I don't know how you don't, how you do that without using social. I don't know how you don't, how you do that without using social media. Posting things on our webpages is insufficient because it doesn't penetrate the community the way it's needed to.
So are you asking strictly for the comp plan, or are you asking for this particular project?
Mainly for the comp plan right now.
Okay, then, yes, then we will work with the Public Relations Office to do so.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
And just to clarify, the legal requirements for advertising and notice of the public hearing have been satisfied?
Yes.
No, I understand that, but I'm interested in making sure that citizens are fully aware that as much transparency as we can have, the better for everybody, I think.
Are you guys looking for a motion on this one, or a consensus?
You've got to close the public hearing.
Got to close the hearing. Any other questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, the public hearing is now concluded, so now we can.
I mean, we don't have to act today on it, but I'm good if you want to.
I'm good.
I think everyone seems to be okay. So you want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes, same sign.
Just one last comment. You go through this package, that's a lot of work. A lot of work, so thank you for everything you guys did.
It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another public hearing, but that's not scheduled until ten o'clock, so we're going to have to wait. I see Rick Currie's here, do we want to move on? Skip over to the next one. End item, is everyone okay with that? Request for quotation award twenty-three dash seven forty-nine, retention pond mowing services. Good morning, Rick.
Rick Currie, President of Purchasing.
John Swager, Stormwater Manager.
Standing before you, request quotation award Q dash twenty-three dash seven forty-nine, retention pond mowing services. Just want to say normally requests for quotations do not come before the board because of the dollar threshold, but this particular quotation has the potential to exceed fifty thousand. Reason why I brought it before the board. Recommended motion, move to award retention pond mowing services to responsible responsive bidder, Diamond Lawn and Landscape, Hagerstown, Maryland. Lowest total sum price and amount of, there's a typo there, that should be ten thousand dollars even, not ten thousand fifty. This is for mowing retention ponds throughout the county, which the services are to begin on July 1st of 2023 through October 31st, and then commence again in August, excuse me, April 30th of 2024. Then if the vendor wishes to renew the contract, they would have to request it in writing. You can see that the quote was advertised on the various medias and websites, number of individuals downloaded, number of quotes that we did receive, we have concurrences, and we have the, you have the bid tabulation sheet showing all the prices submitted from the vendors, seven vendors that submitted the quotation. Are there any questions?
Hey, Rick, what's the rotation on, what rotation are we on on mowing?
Rotation?
How, frequency?
Every three to four weeks.
Every three to four weeks, so this bid is based on that, correct? So what if, which I've heard dozens of times, okay, this place is a mess, we need to get the county to mow it, and first they determine if the county's responsible for it, and most cases they are now. So what do we do if we have to call them to mow it? Do we mow it to satisfy a community, or do we just keep it on the same frequency? Because I'm wondering, how does that, is that price built in if you got to go back and, or you just don't do it?
This is per mowing, so it's ten thousand per mowing. And this is separate from the on-call mowing service.
Two different contracts we have here.
Okay, so on-call is one of them?
On-call mowing is one for like residential properties, but this is all retention pond mowing.
Well, the retention pond seems to be a problem with the communities unless I'm missing something here.
There are some retention pond problems, and that's the reason why this was actually taken, put in effect to address that.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I get the calls, you know, this looks terrible. I'm wondering if this, I think I understand it, so.
This should take care of that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Other questions, motion?
I motion to approve, and thanks for your good work, Rick.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion to second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is contract award purchase sixteen twelve, physical examination services. Randy Nagle, good morning.
Good morning, Randy Nagle, Byron, the purchasing department. Tracy, the coordinator. The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the contract award PUR sixteen twelve, physical examination services. Recommended motion is to move to award the contract for physical examination services for various services to be performed on county employees and candidates for county employment, vacancies, and for the Washington County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association personnel to the responsive responsible sole proposal of help at work based on estimated quantities for the total amount of four-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. The invitation of bid was advertised in the local newspaper, on the county's website, and the state of Maryland's e-Maryland Marketplace website. Nineteen firms downloaded the document online, and one firm was represented at the pre-proposal conference. We did receive one bid. The sole proposal did come from the incumbent medical firm. Contract is for a period of one year, tentatively to begin July 1st, 2023, with the option to renew up to four consecutive one-year periods. Funding is available in the various departments as indicated in the agenda report form.
Questions or comments?
I don't have any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes, same sign. Thank you. Thank you, please. Still not quite ten o'clock. Okay, the next item is bid award, purchase sixteen twenty, dumpster services at Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment and Clean County.
Randy Nagle, Byron, in the purchasing department.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management.
The last recommendation I have for you is a bid award, PUR sixteen twenty, dumpster services at the Conica Jig Wastewater Treatment Plan in Clean County. Move to award the contract for dumpster services to the responsive responsible bidder, BFI Waste Services, doing business as Republic Services out of Hagerstown, Maryland, for a total amount of sixty thousand twenty-four dollars. The county accepted bids for dumpster services on May 31st, 2023. The bid was advertised in the state of Maryland's e-Maryland Marketplace website, the county's website, and the local newspaper. The total sum bid proposal was requested for the work based on unit pricing and estimated quantities. The required on-call services for the removal of disposable and waste from the above referenced location. Twelve companies downloaded the document, we did receive one bid. The contract is for a period of one year to commence August 1st, 2023, with the option for the county to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods, and funds are budgeted for these services.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Hoes, same sign. Thank you. Next item is Program Open Spaces Annual Program. Andrew Eschman, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Andrew Eschman, Director of Public Works. I'm here before you to present and seek a motion for the approval of the annual FY24 Program Open Space Project List as presented and recommended by the Washington County Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. As per POS guidelines, each year, the Board of County Commissioners is required to adopt the annual program. In the fall, various municipalities, the Board of Education, Hagerstown Community College, as well as the county, submit projects for consideration for inclusion in the annual program. Based upon anticipated available funds, a program is developed, giving consideration to county parks and recreation priorities, the community benefit, and the priority ranking of the sponsor. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board voted at the May 4th meeting to recommend the proposed schedule to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption. After adoption, notifications provided to the sponsors as to which projects have been included, along with approval letters. This then allows the sponsors to apply for funding to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources after July 1st. This year, we're scheduled to receive one million nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-one dollars in POS funds since Washington County has met its acquisition goals. Therefore, twenty-five percent of the funding source must be used for acquisition. The remaining seventy-five percent may be used for either acquisition or park development projects. The acquisition projects are available for a hundred percent reimbursement for eligible expenses, while development projects must require a minimum of ten percent match. There's a schedule in here of the projects scheduled to be funded, as well as exhibits for each project, allocation, and then a final sheet showing all the requests received. I'd like to highlight just a few projects I think are noteworthy. First of all, Boonsboro on here is looking to convert one of its underutilized basketball courts into pickleball courts, and for those who are in the Parks and Rec realm know that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the county, and so we're certainly appreciative of them taking on that project to provide that resource to the community. Also on here, Sharpsburg Historical Park. So a number of years ago, the county provided POS funds to acquire what was formerly the gas station there at the corner of Main Street and Town. The town has put together, I think, a really nice comprehensive plan for interpretive plaza and gateway feature to the town. I think the park, and speaking on behalf of the Parks and Rec Board and myself, we're all impressed with the concept they have come up with there, and so that project would allow them to do a lot of the major earthmoving and construction. They would then need to follow through and do some of the interpretive signage and finishing touches for that. But it is a big project for the town and its size, but it was one I think we all felt very strongly about. Moving down and again to the bottom, not to skip over too much if there's questions, but you'll see on the acquisition side, this year, we're carrying forward funds for a previous project that's a placeholder for the town of Williamsport, which is the acquisition of the former Springfield Mansion. That money is to represent essentially the land value associated with that potential acquisition, as it could be proved costly. And then the line below that still leaves us, we didn't have any other acquisition requests, and so the remaining funds would essentially sit unencumbered, unallocated, and so if there happened to be projects that would come up through the fiscal year, that money would be available as well with our unencumbered balance. So it's not that we have to assign that money to a project, we don't necessarily lose it, it'll be there for us to use should we choose to do so. Are there any questions at this time?
No, just how much is the one-nine do we use for, are we using it all, and keeping a reserve, what we had left, carryover back is?
Yeah, so what we try to do each year is balance the funding requests with what's available each year. Normally, I would say there's some money turned over each year to end the project, you don't spend it all, and so that goes back into the fund, and so you can replenish that way. With project costs being higher, that, those amounts haven't been quite as high, but you notice on the sheet, the development total that we're proposing here is one million four-hundred-eighty-four thousand, some change, so it's actually about forty-eight thousand more dollars in projects that we're funding versus what we're receiving this year, and we're able to do that because of, again, remaining funds being turned over.
Restrictions on carryover for two years, three years?
Ultimately, there's seven years you need to use your funds, and so they turn over, and essentially they use the oldest funds that they apply in their, in how they do their accounting.
Thank you.
Andrea, just two questions, one about how you do this. So do you actually, do you reach out to every one of the municipalities?
Correct. Send out letters and emails to the elected officials, and then the town managers are the people that we normally work with who do the applications, they're aware of it, and then they get a follow-up response as well. So this year, there's less applicants. Some of it's because some of the communities are working on prior projects, and so they're catching up on things and didn't make an application this year. Some of the communities, smaller communities, it's infrequent that they make requests.
Are you able to communicate with Ruritans, and how would they fit into this process?
So Ruritans aren't directly eligible because they're not a local government, so they're not normally included in that process because it's for, the money comes to the counties, and essentially the counties decide how the money is distributed. And again, historically, the Ruritans have been included in that because the mechanism for allowing them to receive funds, because it's not technically publicly-owned property.
So what I'm wondering about is, is making, we're assuming that there's communication between a Rutan and municipality that might be able to facilitate what might be a needed or valid project, but it's being generated, for example, out of Leidersburg?
Yes, there's some Morgansville, it's come up, I know we have a number of Ruritans, and so I've talked about this with Susan Buchanan, some of it is, there's maybe other better means to fund those projects than POS, just because of the funding limitations.
Trying to make sure we're, everyone is aware of how they might be able to access and use the funds, whether or not they're the normal conduit for it or not, if there's a creative way to make things happen that could benefit one of our communities. The other question is the WCPS, Williamsport Elementary School. I support that, but would that normally, would we normally use these funds for playgrounds at our elementary schools? Is that what we normally do?
That's been a type of project that the schools have submitted and has been funded in the past, the reason being, there's a community benefit, particularly if people can walk to that location. That school is also a facility that the county Parks and Recreation runs a summer camp, and so for eight, nine weeks, it's an amenity that the kids are using in that program. So when it comes to the college, when it comes to the schools, we are a bit more selective in the types of projects, because again, the intent is that it's for community and public benefit, not solely for those institutional uses.
Okay, good, well, I appreciate the lack of explanation, and as usual, you have great depth of knowledge, so thank you.
Andrea, a question I have. The Agriculture Education Center indoor multipurpose building, is that the same project that started out with using COVID? Was it ARPA funding? I'm not sure what particular program it was, but that project, I believe at the time, was supposed to be a five-million-dollar project, and it looks like it's now nine-point-six million?
Yes, a lot of it is because of the cost even increasing since three, four years ago, buildings, and then also the state changed the design requirements for buildings that need to be designed to a certain energy efficiency and standard, and so that, that's another factor in costs, not just for this, but across the board.
I wonder, since that program originally was going to be built, from my understanding, exclusively with grant funding, it looks like now that may not be possible. Looks like you may be peeling away five-hundred-and-fifty thousand of POS funding to put towards that project, but have we had a reevaluation as to the necessity of that, that particular building? I know when, one of the arguments that was used, and this wasn't the only argument, in all fairness, but one of the arguments that was used is that would provide us an opportunity for a max vaccine site if we ever needed one. We didn't have that problem during COVID, we found those buildings and those opportunities. So I'm just wondering if now, if the project has doubled in cost, should we reevaluate the necessity of that particular project? Maybe we're too far along, I know we've had some financial allocations to the construction or the design, something recently came about, but that, this is the first time I'm hearing that that project doubled in cost, and it was originally going to be funded with grant funding exclusively, and I just, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think that's something that tax dollars should necessarily, I know ARPA funding is tax dollars, I get that, but for me, that's, I don't see that as a priority locally if we're talking about funding and maybe the lack thereof.
So as far as the project cost increase, that was included in the capital budget, the FY24, so this isn't the first time that those numbers are being presented. But, but, yes, the project is not set in stone. Where we currently are is evaluating the onsite water. Where we currently are is evaluating the onsite water sewer requirements and the capacity. And so what was presented was, was hopefully an upper end of what we could do to try to capture that now rather than build small and then realize that it was underdesigned or undersized and have to go back at a later date. So as far as what the actual square footage is, the target was 45,000, but that could be reduced potentially beyond our control if we don't have that capacity. So that's what we're working through right now in, in the design phase, but in terms of the overall cost, again, a lot of it is because the construction costs increase and whether it's this building or another building, a lot of those inflation numbers have, have happened over the past couple of years with material costs and trying to capture what the actual cost will be.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. I just, for me personally, that ranks lower on my priority when we talk about what we could have used the ARPA funding for, water and sewer is an economic development stranglehold for us in Washington County. And I just think, I, I would not like to see additional taxpayer dollars go towards that project, just because I personally rank that lower on the importance level, but I'm one of five.
Yes, from the Parks and Rec Board's perspective, it was very high because it's something that's been talked about in, in the plan for a long time, particularly not only there, but also on the Ag Center side to build out that facility to capture where the growth will be, again, as a four-season event site. And so for those two entities, it's high, but I understand what you're, what you're saying as far as the tax dollars and where that money's being spent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve that submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It is 10:05, so we will go back to our 10 o'clock public hearing, Agricultural Preservation Easement Rankings for FY 2024. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. County staff will introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners may then discuss the issue and take any action that they deem appropriate, including adoption or rejection of the proposal, or they may take the issue under advisement and deliberate at a later date. Good morning, Mr. Boggs. Would you please introduce the matter?
Yes, Chris Boggs, Rural Preservation Administrator.
Joe Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning.
So each year, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation has each county that's, that is involved in the program rank its applications for the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Program easements, or MOUTH easements, as we'll call them moving forward. These rankings are based on a ranking formula and ranked by the Ag, Agricultural Advisory Board, and, and of course, brought to the commissioners for approval. So after, after approval, they're sent down to MOUTH. This year, we, is actually a pretty good year. We get to send down 20 applications this year. The state has increased its funding by about $20 million for this FY '24 funding cycle. We expect that that will equate to roughly eight to 10 easements we'll be able to purchase for that cycle, which would be a little north of 1,000 acres. So it's pretty exciting news coming out of Annapolis for that. So in addition to having to approve the rankings today, we, the Ag Board also, in its meeting, voted to make a change to the priority ranking formula. This change, it was essentially, there was a ranking category about the distance that concerned a property's distance from the UGA. Previously, the, each, the further you were from the UGA, the more points you received in the ranking. The Ag Board voted that they would like to, and recommended to the commissioners, that they would prefer to have properties that were closer to growth areas get more points, and the further you were away, you would get less points. This, this, this proposal was in order to hopefully, you know, stymie any sort of urban growth area expansion in the future, to limit growth, you know, so that the, that encroachments into the rural area would, would be, would be halted by, simply by using land preservation as sort of a growth management tool. This, the, so as you're aware from the, from the packet, staff does not concur with this proposal on the, on multiple points. First being that state guidance on rankings has a, has a category called the P category, or the Priority Preservation category. It's categories broken down into P1, P2, P3, and P4. This category in our ranking system, it falls under P2, which means that if the county has a, a idea that's contrary to the state's recommendation, it must go to the state board and, for approval. And that's what this, this proposal from the Ag Board is, is essentially opposite of what the state recommends, which is, the state recommends that the closer you are to the UGA or, or overall, and the closer you are to priority funding areas, the less points a property should get. Being that established planning doctrine is that, the idea is to preserve land in large expansive blocks in the rural areas in order to essentially create a, a higher economic output from agriculture, being that all of the agricultural land is located in a large area. Farmers that farm multiple properties are, can more easily go from parcel to parcel, and essentially, it's, it can't be, the expansion of these, these areas of preservation cannot be halted by the growth area. Additionally, we had some early applications that came in in January, February, March, under the impression that, you know, they would, that, that, understanding the old ranking system, and staff feels that, you know, it's kind of unfair to them that those applications were received, thinking that they would be able to get a certain number of points, and then the, the point system then would be changed after their application was submitted. Additionally, the, the other thing that I would like to point out is that we just, are, one of our concerns is the hopscotch effect, where, so say this policy did work, and we were able to create a ring of permanently preserved land around the growth area. Then you run the risk of development occurring, skipping over those properties, and occurring in more rural lands. Or for instance, if you look at Portland, Oregon, I mean, as tight as their growth area is, you've got these small towns that are exploding with development, similar to, you know, the small towns like Clear Spring, Keedysville, Boonesboro, and they don't have the infrastructure to handle that sort of growth. And then that's, that's simply because their growth area is, is so strict that they did not plan for any future need to expand. So that is kind of where staff sits on the issue, and that is, that's our, those are our major overarching concerns when it comes to this policy. Moving forward, it, it would be up to the commissioners to decide which way they want to go with the ranking. And then I have two different lists of, of, of property rankings with me, depending on what the, the choice is. But the overarching thing, or not the overarching, but one of the other factors is that the ranking is, by state law, has to be confidential. So I haven't handed the MOUTH yet. It's going to come down to whatever the decision is. But the recommended motion would be to approve a priority ranking of the MOUTH easement applications and forward the top 20 applications to MOUTH pending the board's decision on how they would like to see the ranking category.
Are we open to?
Not yet.
Still, we're still in a public hearing.
Public comments, yes.
If that's the end of staff presentation.
Any other staff presentation, Jill, Chris?
No.
Okay, at this point, we will now open the hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to testify from here this morning, please come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you'd like us to, to know or hear. Okay, hearing, no public comments. Now, back to the commissioner.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris. And what was the vote by the Ag Board?
The Ag Board, the Ag Board did vote 5-0.
Correct.
Or four, it was 4-0 because Jerewell abstained.
So it was unanimous. Okay. Number two, I understand the staff, he has diligently gone through and artfully tried to create and four arguments for not supporting the Ag Board. Each one of these, I can walk through and deconstruct if you would like. The doctrine that you mentioned, doctrine doesn't prevent doing this at all. It's doctrine. So that's sort of a straw man. The Ag Board looked at this, considered it, and said, for the objectives, the goal of preserving land, they understood all of these things that you presented as reasons not to do it. But they also understood that from the larger goal of protecting the rural character of our coun, of our county, that the threat to that rural character primarily exists, exists in areas closer to the urban growth boundary rather than farther away. Preserving land closer to the Potomac River, near Knoxville, for example, is less important at this point in time than preserving blocks of land, okay, that the Ag Board would consider as far as its contiguousness to other agricultural land and the viability of that. Considering current applicants, you can vote on this to take effect next year. Doesn't have to impact people that have applied applications right now, and I would hope the staff would have considered the arguments in ways that one can mitigate in order to advocate for what our advisory panel, thoughtful people dedicating their citizens' time, came up with as the best course forward. You know, the hopscotch effect, that's potentially a, a small problem closer to the, the growth zone, but that would be very dependent upon other zoning decisions, infrastructure, roads, et cetera. And so I don't think you're going to get industry or warehouses or major dense economic development in areas where it's agriculture and you don't have that, and you're going to be dependent upon high-cost, you know, septic fields and things like that, okay? And we have that hopscotch effect occurring in the county anyway, if you look at where the permits are going as far as new housing requests. I would recommend that, you know, we consider seriously what the Ag Board is, has recommended. It will go to the state, the state will consider it. The goal, though, is rural preservation, farmland, economic viability, and the major threat is where it's at, and that's what they're targeting. So I'll have a motion later, but.
I, I'm always a devil's advocate here. I, I was on the Ag Preservation Board for four years, and Derek took it over for me. I generally 95% of the time follow our boards and their advice because they're, they're farmers, they're, they work the ground, I don't. And I'm not saying I'm not this time, I just got to clarify some things. Okay, so you said, we already have, you already have two anonymous groups to the public ranked. Does, does either vote knock any of them out?
It does shuffle the list, it's not significant.
So it's not, nobody on the top couple that are going to get the money is going to get knocked out?
It depends how many, how much more funding you get next year.
They've never done five.
There's going to be, there will be probably someone, maybe two or three applications that one way or the other, you know, don't, don't get an easement. But it's, it's going to happen whether you vote one way or the other, so.
Well, and, and then the next question, so that's telling me that I don't think anybody's going to suffer drastically this year, and I do agree that if we do it, it'd be next year and not affect the people who applied this year. Also, you know, I'm always concerned with land rates, that's my big thing, you know, just, but yeah, actually, this shouldn't affect land rates, I don't think, because if you apply for it, and this is only, if you apply for it, you choose to preserve your, you preserve your land. We're not telling somebody what to do.
No.
So, correct. Okay, so then, how many points extra do they get for being closer?
So it's, it's, it's points zero through five.
I, I get it.
Up to five points right now.
So whatever the board wants to rank, four, three, two, depends on?
Well, it depends on the distance. So if you are right, currently, as it sits, if you're right smack up against a municipality or town growth area or urban growth area, it's zero points.
Gotcha.
If you're a quarter mile away, you get, it's one point. Half mile away, two points.
And what is it, if I'm right outside of the growth area, how many?
Zero.
Zero.
Zero. Now, if we flip-flop it, we, and, and the Ag Board chose to keep the points, distances the same, it's just, now it's, if you're right next to the growth area, you get five points.
Right.
Quarter mile, four, half mile, three.
Right.
Et cetera.
I mean, I understand also your all's point of view, that, that growth area is what it's for. Let's keep the growth here, and let's don't take it, but then again, I can't see, there's no infrastructure to support, you're not going to see a warehouse pop up in Keedysville.
Oh, keep in mind that, I mean, you're, none of, this policy wouldn't have affected any of the warehouses that have gone up anyway. You can't, I mean, state law, you can't preserve land in side growth areas.
But I mean, if, if you didn't get to preserve it, that's, that's.
No, I, I think that the point that we're making here is looking at things very long-term. And kind of, the only concern that we really kind of have here is boxing yourself into a corner is effectively what we're talking about, because it's not that we have any, any issue or any hangup with what the Agricultural Advisory Board is asking to do. We're just simply saying that from our perspective, you're boxing yourself in, and by creating more easements closer to the growth area, then they're getting into more incompatible areas, where you're going to have conflicts between growth and, and preservation. That's not necessarily a bad thing, I'm just saying, those, those are the consequences of what you're looking at. And does that then, if you preserve land closer to the growth area, will that really be able to allow that farmer to maintain long-term their economic viability?
But it would be the farmer's choice.
That's absolutely correct.
A farmer could come to me tomorrow and say, I want to downzone and get out of highway interchange.
Yes.
I'm going to say, thank you, let's downzone you.
Now, the only, the only bad side of that, and that's what we are, we, we feel that we just, we're here to educate. The only downside to that is, long-term, that means you don't have a place to grow.
Right. I, you know, and, and again, I usually stick with the board, and I usually stick with staff, so I'm sort of on the fence here. Well, I'm not on the fence, actually.
Look, I'm not used to bringing anything controversial up here, so.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's, it's up, I think it's something that, of course, MOUTH has to approve it anyway, right? Do they have to, yeah, they have to approve it.
Yeah.
And they probably will approve it.
It depends, because the, it, it's a flip-flop on their, their, you know, their stated, their guidance in their ranking.
I'm, I'm apt to, I'm apt to go, go along with next year and, and then, and then say, okay, if this isn't working, we always change it, correct?
True.
So, yeah, okay, that's all I had.
Is the map that we're looking at on the screen, those are all of the potential applicants?
Those are, those are the, all of the applicants on the list. The only one that needs to come off, and this, this is, is Gear over there on the far left, south of Clear, southwest of Clear Spring. He actually got an offer last week, so after I submitted the ARF, of course, his full offer, there was a second round funding available, and he accepted it, so that one is not on the list anymore.
I'm in full support of what our Agriculture Advisory Board is recommending. That's nothing, you know, negative to staff, but I support what, what they're trying to accomplish. The way I see it, the land that's most at risk. The way I see it, the land that's most at risk is land that's, that's maybe near those highways or those concentrations of population. And the purpose of preserving land, I think, is to, I think we should look at land that's most at risk of, of losing its, its natural value. And probably, in the Keyesville area, the example that you gave, or maybe, maybe it was a fellow commissioner, that land's probably less likely to be developed for a megastructure of some kind or, or a truck stop. I, I think what they're intending to do is exactly the purpose and the point. I think it would be interesting to see how counties or communities that are in a more urban area, outside of Washington County, maybe closer like Baltimore or DC area, if they have the opportunities for the same kind of programming, I mean, probably as the crow flies, their distance from an interstate or a major highway would be very comparable to these farms that would likely rank higher on the list. And I think for us, my, my future in Washington County, I think I stand to see a lot of change. And change can be good, but, you know, using methods like this, that's being proposed, I think is good for Washington County long-term, and I support what they're trying to accomplish.
Could I reattack on one issue here?
Sure.
Randy, thank you for clarifying those, with those questions, and I wholeheartedly agree with, with Wayne's characterization here. And, you know, I know that, you know, you, staff mentioned that they're concerned about a very long-term boxing things in, but that's exactly the point, you want, from a very long-term perspective, be able to protect that essential part of our economic structure here. And I know our economic development team, you know, and Leslie and a bunch of others are supportive of this, I'm sure, if you brought them in here, the Ag community, and they voted unanimously. So I would like to make a motion to approve the Ag Board's recommendation.
Let the public hear it.
Oh, sorry, sorry, got ahead of myself.
Okay, any other?
Can I make another comment just for the public hearing? You know, I, the hopscotch effect, I understand your reasoning behind that. I would say, we can't even provide the necessary services within the urban growth boundary, within that red boundary on the line, for planned development or potential development. So I, I, I think that should be our priority area for growth, more than likely, and, you know, if, if someone wanted to tap into Clear Spring's municipal water system, I suppose Clear Spring has a say in that, so that could limit potential development or the hopscotch effect as well. So maybe, maybe this would help us reprioritize our own effort to providing services within the urban growth boundary where we can't right now provide coverage that's, that's asked of us.
Bingo.
Other comments? Hearing none, then the public hearing is now concluded, now your comments.
So I'd like a motion to approve the Agricultural Commission's recommendation to, with a new criteria to take effect in one year.
Second.
Motion second on the floor, everyone ready to vote? All in favor?
One question, one question before we vote, sorry. The new criteria has to be approved by the state.
It does.
Correct.
Aye. If we've got a year, that's, makes things a lot easier.
Okay, sorry.
So, for the purposes, I'm sorry, I need to clarify this. So for the purposes of this year, we would go with the staff ranking, knowing that next year, we would want to change those criteria so that the, the Ag Board's recommendations would take effect for next year's ranking, is that correct?
That's correct. But we do the paperwork and get the approval for that now.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Everyone good with that clarification of the motion?
Yes.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
The only thing I would, sorry, I need to jump in, if, if you would like me to hand out, or should we wait till the vote to hand these out, or?
Go ahead and hand them out.
Can I ask a question while, while you're doing this?
Yes, go ahead.
So what is the harm of, what, what's at risk of being lost if we go with the Ag Board's current proposal and how they would rank?
He already answered that.
I, I, I know, I just need a refresher, remind me, I know it was said five minutes ago, but what, what do we risk losing if we go with the Ag Advisory Board's rankings?
Today?
Yes.
Okay, the concern that we have is twofold. Number one, it has not been approved, this ranking has not been approved by the MAF Board, nor has it gone through a public hearing with this board. Typically, the ranking of these, these projects is approved by this, by this entity, not by the Ag Board. So it has not had the chance to go through a public vetting process.
So regardless of what order the rankings come, go in, it still needs to come back before our board for approval?
The ranking process would need to come through this board for ranking approval, so what we'll do is, we'll go back to the Ag Board at our next meeting and just re-verify basically what the, what it is they want to do, and then we will set up a public hearing with this board to enact what that board is recommending.
I thought that's what we just did.
Not through, we did not advertise the ranking process as part of the actual ranking itself, those one through five numbers, that wasn't part of this.
But you need to do that regardless, right? Are you, from what it sounds like you said, you're going to bring us back a ranking to us, whether it's the ranking that the Ag Advisory Board suggested or that staff is suggesting, is there a ranking that has to come before us?
The actual priority ranking itself, not the, not ranking the one through 20, we're not talking about ranking the one through 20, we're talking about you actually deciding what those numbers should be, that this is the criteria, these are the numbers, this is the criteria, these are the numbers. That has to go through a public vetting process.
I'm not sure that that's the case, Jill, I'd like to ask the county attorney. I think it's a very minor adjustment to one small category. And it still has to go to the state for approval.
It does have to go to the state for approval, where are the ranking criteria established?
The Ag Board establishes them based off of MAF guidance.
And they're approved by this board.
And, and they are operating on, what has been approved by this board is how things were ranked for this go-round, although they wish to rank things differently in the future, and they want to change that criteria.
Correct.
In the past, when the criteria was established, was it the subject of a public hearing?
Yes.
And what's the basis for that from a legal perspective? What was the requirement underlying that? Or was that just your, your call?
That was not our call, that was the commissioner's call.
So this is the commissioner's call here?
How, how long has the ranking criteria been as established?
Thirty years.
The last time it was updated was before I started. And so there was, it was prior to 2012, I want to say it was around 08, 09, a new category was added, which was, of course, had to be approved by...
I'm a little confused with why we questioning, is it to question waiting a year and do it immediately, or is the, what, what's, I don't know what the question is here. Or is someone, do we have a problem with waiting a year and do it next time around? Or six months, once we get approval, starting the ranking?
Well, I would, I would like to get the approval to get, to move this forward to the state now.
Right.
Okay, and she's saying we need a public hearing, and I'm challenging that premise.
I get it, so what's at stake here is the ranking criteria, not the ranking people. I know how the criteria works, X amount of points for water on your farm, or buildings, or production. So if, only question then I'm hearing is, is do we have to go to a public hearing to change the ranking criteria, is that what you're saying?
Right, right. And I'm asking if that was a preference, or if that was a legal requirement, and since it was established, the conditions were established by the board previously, I, I wonder why you need to go to a public hearing, it's totally within the domain of this body to decide on something as simple as that.
So what's illegal?
I asked Jeff.
Well, we were talking about full transparency earlier, so wouldn't a public hearing be full transparency? I'm okay either way, but, you know, it's, all the other action behind the scene can take place prior to the public hearing if, if we decide to have it. Is this something that we want inside this motion, or we want to go ahead and report with the motion and discuss that separate?
I'm not opposed to a public hearing, but we just had a public hearing on the matter in a way, so...
Yeah, but there was a notification, a public hearing to change the criteria, exactly.
Except that it said this year, the AAB chose to rank easements in a manner contrary to the adopted formula.
And there could be other criteria changes.
Could you be more, more transparent? Yes, I think this board could always be more transparent in things.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just think, hey...
Whatever legal tells me, I'm good, whatever legal says, I'm good.
Now we're not being consistent again.
I would like to find, my original question, if, if the rankings were to be submitted as the Agriculture Advisory Board saw best fit, and as we as a group of commissioners see best fit for our county, could the state come back and say, no, we want this ranked a different way? Would they, would they still give us the same allotment of money, but they just rerank our, our properties, or would we just be cut off from funding entirely?
They don't, they, what, no, they, they, the funding, I don't think would be affected. If they denied the, the proposal to change the ranking, we would just go back to using the old rank?
So we wouldn't lose any money?
We wouldn't lose any money.
So what's the harm with submitting the ranking as suggested by the Agriculture Advisory Board? We're going to have land preserved, one way or the other.
I think my problem with it is the people that already submitted and think they're, they're, they're good, that we're going to go back and tell them, okay, now you got it, you just lost four points because you're not in the growth area. And I would like to see it done with full blessing from MAF, with us, I, I don't, it sounds like you want to do it immediately, for some reason, and not wait till we get the next term around to change the criteria.
We're voting for, the, the current rankings hold, we get the approvals, and then it takes effects next year, and I can restate the motion.
Upon approval of MAF.
Right, I, I...
Mean, I don't know what we're...
Now, I'm willing for an issue of transparency, as Jeff mentioned, and as Jill mentioned, public hearing. I, if we can have consensus that this comes up specifically in two weeks for a public hearing, if that's, you can advertise, maybe it has to go three weeks to get the advertising out.
Any chance we could do it in like, two months, so I can be there?
Oh, okay. Well, it'll be good enough for the next iteration, but I'd like to bring this back in the issue of transparency, because I, I do want to default to transparency as best we can, so...
So would you want to restate?
I'll restate my motion, approve the ranking as is, and vote on this as submitted for approval. That's my motion. For the rankings for this year.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Chris.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Call for the vote, all in favor by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign.
There's a commitment that we will do a public hearing on this issue going forward. So thank you very much, Jill, we've got where we needed to be. Would be surprised if the state didn't support something since the charter is about preservation.
Thank you. Okay, next item up is Maryland draft building energy performance standards, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners, Andrew Renshaw, Director of Public Works. Here before you this morning, just for informational purposes, to give you an update on some upcoming new regulation that will affect not only county government, but really all building owners above a certain class across the state. In 2022, Maryland passed the Climate Solutions Now Act, which requires the Maryland Department of the Environment to develop building energy performance standards. MDE must develop standards for buildings that, among other requirements, achieve a 20% reduction in net direct greenhouse gas emissions by January 1st, 2030, as compared with 2025 levels for average buildings of similar construction. And the big item here is net zero direct greenhouse gas emissions by January 1st, 2040. They're defining covered buildings as 35,000 square feet or larger. There are some exemptions for parking garages and other minor things. Historic properties, public and non-public elementary and secondary schools, manufacturing buildings, and agriculture buildings are exempt. Starting in 2025, owners of these covered buildings will need to report data to MDE. There's also requirements for the utility providers to do that as well. This will affect public and privately owned buildings. The draft standards, which are included in the ARF, were released just a few weeks ago, May 15th. However, I think it's unlikely that substantial alterations will occur. However, I'm planning on sending a comment letter in regarding clarification and a few things that I've, I've noticed, as well as any input received today. The, as I mentioned before, the, the first benchmark reports are due starting in 2025, and failure to meet the standards results in what they're calling an alternate compliance fee paid for every metric ton of nectar emissions in excess of the standard. So essentially, what they're doing is, they want to have all the buildings over 35,000 square feet in these categories to essentially be net-neutral greenhouse gas emissions. I have provided a sample, just again, rough calculations, because we don't have all the information about how they're going to do this, for one of the county-owned buildings. And in terms of order of magnitude, I think we're looking at some of these buildings, whatever we're budgeting currently for utility costs is nearly what the alternate compliance fee will be by 2040. So it's certainly not going to be a cheap undertaking to, to comply either way for doing the upgrades versus paying these fees. And again, this is something that's statewide, not just unique to Washington County. Again, I've looked at the, the buildings for the county that could potentially fall under this, and, and we'll work through that list to see if we can narrow any of those down with some of the exceptions. But again, really, I just wanted to bring this before you for your information, as well as there's any comment or feedback you'd like to provide, so that can go back to the state.
Andrew, would you be able to provide us with your listing of the buildings that would fall in under this?
Yes, I have a draft here right now, again, there, just, for example, one of the comments I want to clarify is, right now, it says, buildings that are individually designated as historic structures are exempt. So take, for example, the courthouse structure, that's a building that's individually listed on the National Registry. The building we're in is actually listed as a contributing building in the Hagerstown Historic District. So clarifying some of those things could potentially be the difference of, does this building fall in, or does it not? So following that, there's some anomalies, the district court building down the street is actually older than this one, but for some reason is listed as non-contributing. So is it to our benefit to add that building, to get it that designated status that would provide some leeway for us? But in terms of the big one, you're looking at, I think, the sheriff's office, the detention center, the patrol, all of those are very large buildings that are over the threshold. And again, some of the downtown buildings could potentially be exempt because we're in the Historic District. The example I provided, MLK, they've listed elementary and secondary schools as an exemption, but for some reason, again, we have head start there, they didn't do that for preschool, pre-K, which I think they're similar classifications, but you'll note in one of the page here, they have a line item for preschool daycare and, and what those targets are. So this is certainly a big undertaking, you can more or less assume that whatever the interim standard is, is roughly how much energy electricity these facilities use and where the target is. So you take a building like the hospital, you know, that's an enormous undertaking to go from a high energy use all the way to zero in 15 years. So I think there's going to be a lot of statewide effects, maybe a lot more information to come, but I just wanted to get this before you now.
Okay, Andrew, I'll just, statement out there right up front, CO2 is actually good, okay? And historically, it used to be five times greater, and less CO2 is actually bad in many ways, and, but that's not our argument right now, this is a mandate. Do we have a list, can the zoning, I guess, can the county provide a list of buildings impacted within the county? impacted within the county that are 35,000 square feet or higher? And, you know, most of these probably aren't aware of this looming impact on them? Just wondering if that's something we could have a responsibility to do or help communicate with?
Yes, I think from the county's perspective, at this point, there's been some webinars and information offered by MDE, but again, if you're a building owner, you may not be aware of this. And so the probably easiest way is to get with the GIS office, and they might be able to sort things by square footage from ESTAT and what the zoning is, because again, manufacturing and things like that may fall out.
I just think that's diligence on our part. If you could just get with them, or, you know.
Yes.
Michelle, from your position, and we'll figure out what to do with it. It might be a small list, it might be a big list. What are the types of things that you say that we would actually have to do to a building to comply?
Well, again, they have to, is up to the owner to decide. They're simply saying, if you don't, then here's the fee that you need to pay.
And that's in addition to their energy consumption that they're already doing?
Correct. And so I haven't done a lot of research, but certainly I think Maryland's goal of zero is very ambitious, and like many things, you probably have an 80/20 rule that you're going to have to pay 80% to get that last residual 20. Because to go from zero, you're looking at running everything off of renewable electric. And so for large buildings, there's certainly challenges with doing that, upgrading the electrical service, insulation, all of the things to get it all the way down to zero. The first thing we would look at doing is even a building like MLK, which is certainly, it's on our list right now to do, you know, heating fuel has a higher CO2 output than, say, natural gas. So you start stepping things down, and then you look at, do you need to do geothermal to reduce the heating load that so you could actually heat and cool these buildings off of electric? Because it becomes very challenging.
Solar panels on the roofs, is that one of the?
Correct, that's, you know, a lot of it.
But that's costly.
Yes, it's costly, and so those are all things that I think we'll sort out as you start looking at this. How do you actually do it to achieve these goals? Is it financially feasible for us, or wise to do that project, or is it cheaper in terms of the payback period to pay the fee?
Well, this is an additional cost that's going to be burdening our taxpayers, and we're concerned about that, we are here. It's a mandate, right?
Correct, unless it changes.
No fund being provided, so it's another one of the darn mandates coming out of Annapolis, ideologically driven, not based on science at all. And I hope the Herald got that. Sort of tired of unfunded mandates.
It's a little early. Some of the states and places that have done this have essentially taken the fee money and put it towards a program. There's tax credits, but obviously, as a local government, and you're speaking on our interests, we're exempt from those programs. Even right now, some of the things that are available as tax incentives don't apply to the county, now that they would be eligible for anyone who pays taxes. So again, that hasn't been released yet. This is very fresh and new, and so in terms of how they're going to implement it, it's still forthcoming.
We'll learn more, but there are not inexpensive alternatives being provided. We don't have a plethora of options that are inexpensive to help make these goals, and it's a mandate, so. All right, thank you. I'll have more questions later. Next time the governor's in town, let's raise that with him.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is casualty insurance renewal. Tracy? And Patrick? Good morning.
Good morning. Tracy McCammon, Risk Management Coordinator.
Good morning. Patrick Buck with CBIS.
We're here to present the 2023-2024 Casualty Renewal Insurance. The recommended motion is moved to renew the liability policies with Travelers Insurance Company and the airport liability policy with AIG. Renewal quotes from insurance carriers are reflected on the attached premium comparison. The total renewal is a 3.1 increase in premium over what was paid last year. Cyber liability continues to see higher premiums due to how volatile the cyber market has been. Total premiums for all the coverages is $1,578,272. Excluding the property and inland marine premiums that were approved back in April of this year, the casualty lines had increased by 6.2% in premium. Since we were able to change carriers and considering our loss ratio, we are below our budgeted 8%. So this is a savings to the budget of $73,790. Concurrence is Michelle Gordon, Interom County Administrator, and Kendall DeSagne, Deputy County Attorney and Interom Director of Human Resources. The alternative would be to complete a complete market bid, but then that would create a lapse in coverage. So with that, do you have any questions?
Tracy, with the savings, $73,790, just to clarify, that's fiscal year 24's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Where will that savings go?
It will be more so on the property line, because that's where we had the most savings.
I'm sorry, the savings that we're realizing, what are we doing with the $73,790? Is that going to be reallocated to another area of county government?
We don't normally reallocate that. It would just be returned to the, to fund, to reserves at the end of the year. It would just be unallocated.
But I think we're going to do some budget adjustments. I think we're going to need to do some minor tweaks in a couple areas with hirings or personnel or something, maybe not directly related to this, but to your point, I think at some point, we do a little bit of a budget realignment. I'd expect so.
Certainly, we could put that on the list of potential funding availability for any of those revisions that we're talking about coming forward.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
And second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for.
Motion to go into closed session.
Yeah, motion second to go into closed session for the reasons stated. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? And let's take a five-minute recess.